Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt.
We'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Let him come.
What will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and we give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we do not do temptation, but deliver us from sin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberate and just and strong.
Vocal.
Councilwoman, Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas?
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marquardt?
Here.
Councilmember Warren White?
Here.
Councilmember Troy Como?
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill?
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Dan Bell?
Here.
Item one, public comment.
Benjamin Myers to discuss items five A and B.
Good evening, Councilor.
Good evening.
This item that's on the agenda before the planning and zoning, the planning and zoning did not prove this, all right? Didn't even get a vote. They couldn't take a vote because nobody seconded the forced motion by some of the people in charge of planning and zoning. Now, what was described to us is what this person is trying to put on this lot. It's one of the, uh, planning and zoning, people refer to it as a shanty town. You know, what they're trying to go shanty town right in your front yard. You know, it doesn't, it does not appropriate. We had seven or eight people at the planning and zoning meeting who spoke against it. Some of them are here tonight, you know, after we connected with Mr. Paul, uh, Mr. Lawrence E. and Mr. Jabar and Maggie Daniels. I've just spoke with, uh, as well as Mr. Johnson, who stays right at the corner of Washington. All of those are against this, all right? And, uh, what she described to us, what she's talking about is putting some trailers there, right? So say instead of low-income housing, some trailers that she's going to rent to people for $500 a month. Well, I'm sorry, that doesn't sound like somebody trying to assist somebody with low-income housing. You know, in other words, that's, again, it's going to be at the expense of the people who have such a thing put in their facility. You understand that would depreciate the value of our properties in that facility, all right, right away, instantly? And not to mention, uh, this, uh, you're not describing a trailer park. And speaking of which, trailer parks, we've been living by the rule here in New Iberia that a trailer park consists of 10 trailers or more. This two thing, I don't know where it came out the air again, kind of like some things that be dropping out the air, knowing how to get change on a, you know, a charter, you know, at our ordinance is. But that's where we were and that's where we still are, as far as I'm concerned. But again, we, uh, it's eight of us who are here at the planning and zoning, speaking against this and would not like to have it. As a matter of fact, Mr. Ron Davis, one of the people at the meeting. I wish that some of you all would have been there too, to hear what's going on, all right? What about if you didn't know what she said and about the rent that would be charged? And it's a rent, all right? It's not a tax where you try to own it. And we're talking about a bunch of old trailers, all right? None over 10 years old, what she said, eight, but you all saying now 10 constitute a trailer park, you know, if you want to build a trailer park of such a nature. Well, that's, to me, is not a trailer park. That's a trailer village. You understand what I'm saying? You put some trailers all on one spot to surrender much yourself to benefit. If you get, let's say you get 20 of them, all right, up on the spot, you understand? At $500 a month, you understand? That's $10,000 a month for that person, all right? And that's, that's not helping people with low-income housing. What we think is low-income housing is those homes that were built back of the west end park up there, or west end, a lane, or right back of where the swimming pool was in the west end. That's low-income housing, all right? And, and speaking of which, I think that area should be annexed into the city limits because it's right on our borders and that's all people who just moved out of the housing in, in Dodge City, right across the line to get into those new, uh, homes, okay? But again, uh, we all are against this. Everybody in the community is against it. You understand what I'm saying? And that's the bottom line. Then again, I don't hear anything that describes something to help low-income housing or people with low-income housing. And that's, that's ridiculous, you understand? Because we got some low-income housing right back our home, the mixed homes. $200 a month, $150, some of them, you understand? The homes that they built back of Dodge City, you know, $250, $300 a month, you understand? So these are low-income and helping people get assistance to buy a home where they can save up some money and buy homes, right? So again, this trailer thing, that's just a, that's a sham, all right? And we don't need a shanty town or huts, trailer huts, you know, 10 years old already. Hell, how they gonna look in five years? You want to see how they gonna look? Go right down Walton Street, look at those trailers, all right? Go right down in your district, look at those trailers, all right? And it does depreciate our property value in the vicinity. And we wish that you support planning and zoning, you always have. Planning and zoning did not approve this, you understand? As a matter of fact, like I said, they couldn't even get a vote. You understand that nobody seconded it? And then we get, the guy who made the motion was forced by the chairman and somebody else. Okay, well, just make the motion, let's see what's happening. Nothing, all right? So support planning and zoning, that's why you got them there, you know? Bottom line. Thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of July 15th, 2025, which were published on July 30th, 2025.
I need a motion. Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman David Merrill. Is there any comments on our minutes of July 15? Are they good? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Three A.
Special Ordinance Number 2024-2025-19, An Ordinance Amending the Budget to Account for Mosquito Control and Drainage Improvements.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and Councilman Ron Davis. Is anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Now I'm looking for a main motion.
Move.
Uh, Councilman David Merrill and Councilman Troy Como. Is there any discussion on this? Everybody good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Item four A.
Resolution Number 2584, a resolution approving change order number one for the American Rescue Plan Act, One Block at a Time, One, Home Repairs for Seniors, Low Income and Disabled Communities Project, Asphalt Shingle Roof Replacements, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion. Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Warren White. Hi, David. Want to tell us about it? This is our $10,000 change order on all those roofs?
Correct. So, um, about a month ago, the contractor started on this project. They've gone through pretty much three or four days a house. Um, and throughout the process, we discovered, you know, things that needed to be addressed immediately because the houses were open and exposed. And so the contractor made a good inventory of the different items. We're talking about rot on the decking of the, uh, roofs, so it's plywood or tongue and groove boards. We're talking about roofing shingles and layering of roofs. They usually only accommodate for one or two layers of material. Some houses had four or five.
Yeah.
So they just kind of built up these roofs over the years. That is extra labor involved in that. Um, and so most of these, like I said, these are unforeseen conditions, uh, dealing with rot and, uh, roofing materials. So it totaled $10,000 over the 12 different roofs that we had. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
Um, do we have pictures of the work that was done?
Yeah, this is associated with the next slide, but we could talk about that one if that's okay.
Yeah. We're going to do the substantial completion next, but we could do it now. I mean, either way.
So these are before and afters of each of the houses.
Before. After. Before.
Everybody's looking. Should have some background music.
Next time.
Okay, next time. And now we're on to metal roofs.
The metal roofs are starting right now. Um, so again, we will likely encounter some unforeseen issues. These are a lot of old homes. Um, you know, houses that may not have had their roof repaired immediately. So water infiltration has caused some rot. Um, but we're addressing it. They give us sort of a unit price and then they apply that as they see it. And they keep a really good log on all this information, so.
You got a question?
David, I want, one of the, uh, the roof had, called, they had some rusted pipe, uh, vent pipes.
Yes.
You're supposed to go back, y'all went and addressed, said you had talked to them.
Yeah, they, they usually looked at all those different, if there was deteriorated, then they probably replaced it.
They hadn't replaced and the roof was finished.
Oh, the roof was finished on that one? Okay. Well, I'll ask the guy about it to see if there was something more involved with that.
Often that's, often that's just surface rust that can be brushed and cleaned and cold galvanized at a minimal, minimal cost.
The old galvanized metal is better than what's new today.
Better than what's new today, that's right.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. Thank you, David. Four B.
Resolution Number 2585, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the American Rescue Plan Act, One Block at a Time, One, Home Repairs for Seniors, Low Income and Disabled Communities Project, Asphalt Shingle Roof Replacements, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Second.
Councilman Ron Davis, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you.
And I do want to mention that the, uh, next grouping of one block is going out to bid tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So that's painting, uh, handicap ramps and shutters.
Good. And that'll, that's the last of, that's all three of them. So that'll be the last of the money, the last of the projects.
Right.
Good.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a timeframe that is possible to finish those, those last?
The, uh, uh, we're probably looking two, three months after we sign contracts. So we'll work with the, we don't have that many ramps, those are going to probably take the longest. Um, we have seven of them. But we, we gave a, a dedicated timeframe, I think it was about 120 days. Likely, yeah.
Yeah.
We're getting a lot of rain, so that's not helping, but, um, they, we'll see who the contractor is and how diligent they are with it.
Are they good? Madam Clerk, four C.
Resolution Number 2586, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an intergovernmental agreement for school resource officers by in between the City of New Iberia, Iberia Parish School Board and New Iberia Police Department.
I need a motion.
A move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Mayor, does the police officer at these schools, do they stay inside or outside the school?
Both, sir. You know, they're, they're in and out all day long. They stay there all day. We had three schools. Now that Anderson is going to be closing, we'll just have two schools. But our offices are there and they're there, the duration, you know? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Will, uh, will we be able to accommodate this with our present amount of officers?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes. Well, actually, it'd be one less because we only have two schools, but we, we're fine. We, uh, our manpower was good right now, actually. Anybody else? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Four D.
Resolution Number 2587, a resolution rejecting quotes received for the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG clearance program.
This is our demo grant that we've been waiting on forever and we took bids. Well, the state said we have to rebid it. So, uh, that advertisement will go out in two weeks, if I'm not mistaken. But I mean, they hold the cards, they've held them all along. I, I can't, I can't buck them. That's where the money's coming from. Anyway, but, uh, do I have a motion?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Now open it up for discussion. Yes, sir. Councilman Davis.
The reasoning for a rebid was trying to see why, why would they say you have to rebid?
We have a consultant on this project. It's not Mr. Menville, who I love. He has scaled back some of what he does. We have a fairly new consultant. He's handled two projects for us and the issue was nothing on our end. It was between the state and the consultant. So there was some paperwork that they didn't like. So for lack of a form, we, we have to rebid it. It is what it is. And they hold all the cards. They have our half million dollars we'd like to have to clean up our community, so.
We don't want to leave it on.
I just say, yes, ma'am, yes, sir, and, you know, we gotta do what we gotta do. I'm not happy, I, uh, you know, uh, it's hard to find these consultants. I had four to pick from since Mr. Menville is scaling back and some of them didn't want to come to South Louisiana. It's, it's just tough to find, find that type of consultant. So I'm kind of trying to train my clerk, she's training herself, and at some point, Manny might do it. That's what I'm hoping.
Being that we had submitted the bid, uh, and, but rejected because of formality and paperwork.
Right.
So it's, it shouldn't take long for them to go back and revisit.
Well, we have a process. They already looked at it. The environmental's all done. I mean, it's, it's, it's not going to be complicated because it'll be the same bidders and they look at it again. So, uh, it's just a matter of, uh, read advertisement and going through the process again. But yes, sir, this should be simpler for them because they already did.
Thank you.
Everybody good?
Have we witnessed stuff like this before, like this?
No, because we had Mr. Menville. I mean, you and I served together for two terms and then I was out for four years. I came back. This is the beginning of my third term. We haven't had that, so, you know? The guy we had was really good there. Anyway. Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, uh, four C.
Resolution Number 2588, a resolution awarding contract to...
Yeah, four E, I'm sorry.
Joe Johnson Equipment for the purchase of a combination vacuum truck and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. This is the new vac all truck. So, yes, and between the two of them, they have been, we have one for sewer and one for Public Works. And if you go down Main Street, look at Darby Motors, one's been over the air for the last month. Uh, its transmission has some issues.
I did see that.
So it's been there for a while. Uh, sewer, we share between sewer and, uh, Public Works, but, uh, you know, we desperately need another one, so.
What's the timeline, Mayor? How long before we get one?
Months, sir, months.
Six months?
Probably six months. I could rent one and that was $12,000 a month. Uh, but we're doing so well with that new company that y'all let me hire, Hydro Blast, and they are just kicking butt. So having them has really been a blessing. We want to try them anyway because we have so many drains and so much to clean. But the timing of having to wait on a truck, you know, it was, it's just invaluable that they're here working, so.
But the trucks per se, uh, that are available for rent, are they normally readily available if by chance we need it or?
Uh, I talked to them.
The company that you're talking about could help relieve an issue if one arose.
I think they could. I think there's a waiting list. I think they'd like to get one. They're probably a month out. Uh, the company that we have now under contract is picking up the slack. But I'm monitoring that closely because let's just say that sewers went down. If sewers went down before now, other one, the transfer case is, I think it's back. They got to put it back together. I want to say in a week, two weeks tops, we should be back to two. But if sewer goes down, then I'll be calling those people. Yes, sir. I just didn't want to spend $12,000 a month if we didn't have to.
They're doing a, they're taking over right now. Doing a big job with it too.
They are, they are. They've been in the St. Edwards area and they pulling stuff out of pipes and cleaning stuff and, uh, we found some sewer issues today. They were on private property and then they, we, we didn't do it. They hired, uh, themselves and got all their sewer pipes cleaned because St. Edwards has had some issues of sewer issues. So I was glad to see that, not on our nickel, but they were able to help St. Edwards, so it was a good thing. Everybody good? Then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, five A.
Ordinance Number 2025-20, an ordinance taking action on the request submitted by Edmund Construction Company Incorporated for the rezoning of a parcel of property located at the corner of West Pershing Street and South La Salle Street to R6 Mobile Home Park District.
I need a motion. Make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Warren White and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? Um, okay, you sure? Yeah, you didn't have your hand up yet. I heard you. Uh, Councilman Ron Davis, he had his hand up?
Uh, yes, uh, the, uh, this parcel, uh, had been visited the one through planning and zoning and, uh, as, uh, Mr., uh, Terry said that, uh, it failed for a second, but it came to the council, uh, to review and we did take it and put more teeth into, uh, what it takes to, uh, um, you know, oversee a new trailer park, which I think was very necessary. And I think we did good in, in doing that. But, uh, the zoning of this property, uh, means that, uh, it will be and always be, unless revisited, as a, as a mobile home park. Uh, and, 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 but typically when one is owned, uh, one way, then that leads way for others, you know? And, uh, I'm not really excited about it because there was, uh, at one time, same property was being looked at to put housing. And why it failed, I don't know. Uh, and then I think it was supposed to be something else at one time, a graveyard, graveyard site or, or so. And now we down to a trailer park. My thing with trailer parks are that, uh, it brings in transient people back and forth and, you know, some of them don't even vote in the area, you know? You may get some taxes out of the deal, but I don't see what it really does for, uh, the area, you know? So I'm, I'm really not on board with it. Uh, that's just my opinion as such. Uh, it borders my district in District Five, uh, along Emery Lewis. Uh, I've heard from some of the constituents there, uh, you know, and, uh, that may not have been in favor of it, you know? So, uh, and I understand their concerns. So, uh, I'm, I'm not really looking at having it zoned for a trailer park.
Do you want to go next? You sure? Uh, okay, uh.
You, you go ahead.
Hey, you can, you a next, David? Councilman David Merrill.
Well, I wanted to make the meeting, I couldn't make it, planning zoning. And, uh, I also heard from a lot of people in the area, of those areas. And I look at what we got going on right now from District Two and District Five. We have a lot of dilapidated houses all in those areas. It looks horrible. It looks very horrible. And I don't think that putting a trailer park is going to bring up the uplift of the community in those areas to where it is going to benefit some people. Now, I really think too, that in that area, it would be beneficial if there's someone come in, like there's some people I've talked to and other people, uh, that's doing some things, like for not in them, they're doing some things where they're taking houses and building a house, where people can afford to get into with certain finances involved and depends on how many people that's in the households. And I think to me, that's giving you ownership to be able to own. But I have trailer parks in my area. Deer Street, it's horrible, horrible. Take y'all ride over there and see what I'm talking about. I'm not playing, it's real. And if you're going to keep that, that's not bringing up the area, it's bringing it down. There was a lot of people when I first came in office in that area. I had a lot of trailers that moved out of that area that were just sitting there, horrible. People sleeping in and out of. And people that had built their houses there years ago was complaining because they didn't figure that was coming. So they built their houses there because it wasn't supposed to be like that. And it fell into that situation and a lot of people were not happy with it, not happy with staying in those areas. But my thing is uplifting the community. And if you want to uplift the community, areas that need uplifting needs to be uplifting by areas where people can afford and not just keep renting trailers and stuff like that, you know? Because if we can do something like that over there, we need to do something like that all over town, you know? But there's a lot of areas that need cleaning up and, and I just, I just don't like how it look, you know what I'm saying? It is not, it's not, not presentable to me to be able to put it in that section. But like I said, if there's people that have, that want to build some little small houses for people that can afford it and be able to own their own home with stuff that was brought to us at the council from Corey and for not, those are some good things. And that's, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Warren White?
You got to excuse me, I had dinner with, uh, I feel when people have property, you can't tell people to do their property, first of all. Second, for the zoning and, uh, zoning meeting, they only had two person from my district that came and spoke and one person from District Five. I had one phone call against it, they called me, one. One phone call wasn't enough for me to say no, not have the trailer park. Y'all getting all these calls? Why I didn't get these calls? Because it's in my district. I should have been getting them call, not district, not somebody from District Five and District, and District Four. It should have been District Two, Councilman. I'm all for it. I don't think because they have trailers, it's bringing down the property or bringing down the value. Trailer, they have trailer parks in Bruceford, Lafayette, and they look real nice. It's all how you have it and keep it up. So I don't feel they're going to bring down the value of any property. They even said that in zoning meet, trailer park do not bring the property down for housing, for somebody's home. So I don't know where y'all getting this from. So I'm all for it. You're not for it, fine. That's it, I'm done.
Yeah, so, um, I've got a lot of history with planning and zoning. I served in parish planning and zoning for a long time and I served on the parish council when we did parish-wide zoning. And I, I would agree, um, with some of the comments that, uh, the older parks definitely are, um, some of them are undesirable and need some sprucing up. And so I was excited about the, the new ordinance that we passed to improve, uh, the regulations and guidelines for the, the new trailer parks. So I think in all fairness to the subject, not to anyone in particular, but to the subject matter, the old parks have been following the old rules, right? Just like we have old homes that are, that need to be torn down, they were built at a long time ago and, and have maybe a different set of standards, um, building codes and what have you. I would compare some of the older parks, or to the comment rather, about, um, transient people. I mean, we got apartment complexes that are all over town. So it's, um, I would compare that in, in some ways when you got a, a larger number of people concentrated in a small geographical area. So I would say that if we're policing and inspecting, um, the new parks as they're being constructed, I think we, we set a new precedence and a new set of guidelines that, that we can prevent them or regulate them from becoming old and undesirable spaces. And I would say that, um, property values, I, I completely disagree with the thought that, uh, trailer parks will, will decrease property values because I rode down Troy Road today and that's been one of my favorite comparisons is that you have houses on one side of Troy Road that are three, four, $500,000 houses and you have mobile homes that are right across the street and the mobile homes were there first. And if you know any little bit about property values, the value of your property is, is compared to other properties of your size and, and build for what they've been recently sold for when you do appraisals. So I, I, I have a problem. I don't agree, I should say, I don't agree with that analogy of, of property values, uh, as it comes to appraisals. Um, and Troy Road is a good example of that because again, the mobile homes were there first and the, the several hundred thousand dollar values of the homes across the street came much after. And those people seem to have gotten, uh, gotten along pretty well with their construction and the new homes being located there. So, uh, I, I think that the, the, the new ordinance, the work that we did and the new ordinances will, should prevail in, uh, in setting a new guidelines and new precedents on what we expect, uh, trailer parks to be like and how they should be managed. And, um, I'm, I'm completely confident in the work that what we've done here in this council and, and the, the rules that we set will, uh, will allow this type of construction or development rather to, uh, to go forward. And I think there are many different budgets, if you will, for living, and, and the people who fit that budget need a place to live too. And, and we, uh, we have seen enough outmigration in our population. We need to be, uh, more friendly to people who, who li, who need that, that budget group or need that, um, that, the housing in that budget. So I, I'll be supporting it. Um, thank you.
April Ten, Ricky Garcia.
Again, I, I like some of, of Mr. Como's comments as well, but I, I wish, I truly wish that somebody would have called me and complained or discussed it with me. I had one call, not one call, not even creating an ordinance, or this ordinance on, on, on here to vote tonight. Not one for or against it. I did my homework on it and, uh, you know, I'd be a no vote tonight if we was thinking about a whole ordinance. But since we really did our homework and restructured, you know, I really think that we ought to give this a chance and try to initiate something and, and watch and see what happens, uh, whether we agree or disagree with what kind of housing goes on there. We do need rooftops and, and I'm not a big, I'm not a big mobile home guy, but with the new rules and, and, and what we put together to, you know, with trailers ten years or newer and trying to accommodate those things that we're doing, I do not, I really feel comfortable we're not going to see what we, we have in our community now as far as trailer parks exist. I don't think none of us kind of wants to see this, but again, you know, we have a lot of houses that need attention in our town as well. Uh, so maybe the possibility exists that, uh, you know, this trailer park will, will move some people, relocate, and we can address the houses that need some concerns and, and move on that. But I think all of our eyes are on this project and are going to be paying close attention. Um, you know, I wish the planning zone would have gave us their recommendation moving forward, but they haven't. But again, you know, I represent the whole city and, and I haven't received, not even an email, not one. And, uh, so, uh, there's, the, the people that are not agreeing with this should reach out and let us know and have that discussion. But currently, uh, I think our new ordinance is really lock solid and tight. Uh, is it perfect? No. But I think it's going to make a difference in, in bring up the value of that particular property we're located. Definitely going to bring the value of that property up with the newer trailers and, and income that's could be derived from it.
Councilman Ten.
Yeah, Mayor, we got this, um, the, the list of the neighbors in our packet. Is that the neighbors that was in agreement with the trailer park or?
A neighboring, they're neighboring the neighbor.
Well, it wasn't neighbors because we got some in California.
That's the, that's the people that planted and zoned and had to notify.
Okay.
The, the list is, I, I think, let me make sure, is that right, Jane?
How many feet around from here?
Want to let Jane, how many? Come on up, if you don't mind. Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, but we got questions. But that list is in the packet because that's everybody around the property that you notify.
That's who was notified.
Within, how many feet of the property are, is a?
Well, it doesn't have to be, um, within a foot, um, but just the adjoining property owners, those adjacent. And then in addition to that, we posted the blue signs, you know, for people that didn't receive notifications. And of course, a public notice went out too.
Okay. I just didn't know it was in the packet, didn't say what it was about. Thank you.
It's Jane, if I will.
Hang on, wait. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'd be the traffic cop. Everybody gets a chance to speak first. Uh, Councilman Book Marca.
Wait, I'm not seeing.
Oh, you weren't, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was just asking about the list.
Okay.
You said okay and looked away.
I meant, I meant okay to Jane, I'm sorry. You want to go in, I'll, I'll come back later.
You still have the floor.
Sure.
No, 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 you still have the floor. Sorry. I thought okay meant we were moving on.
Yeah. Look, I, I know some, some of my friends has trailer parks and they have these guidelines where they're really nice and these trailer parks are fifteen, eighteen years old and they're still nice. But it had the guidelines. And I agree totally with Mr. Merrill with the ones in his district. You know, it's scary to think that could happen here, but we didn't have the guidelines. And if someone sticks by the guidelines that we have, it's could be a nice project. We can't guarantee that. We only have the ordinance to stick by and we have to enforce that. Because if you don't enforce it, it means nothing. And I really believe that, that, um, every administration changes the way they do things, the way they enforce things, and, and we can't predict what's might not happen. We can only predict what we think will happen with what we want and what we vote on. Because, um, I understand, I mean, in someone else's district, I respect that totally. It's their district, they represent it, we all can put our two cents in, but we have to grieve some of it. And we wouldn't have changed some of those ordinances, all those guidelines, there's no way I could support it. But you look at the money that the, the investor has to put to open his trailer park, there's a lot. I don't know when they could get their money back, how many years? I hope they young. So I think we are really asking a lot from them to do this, to invest in a piece of property that it, it, we get nothing far right now but grass. But I could tell you, I understand that maybe we have to come back and see what we can do. And Mr. Merrill mentioned about these older trailer parks. I agree with him totally. And I was here when we started eliminating trailers after, uh, six, seven months and we moved it to a year because of that. We had no way to enforce it. But I think we have a way to enforce it now. And, and I, I think we might not be here when that time comes. And I, I'll hope, um, I think the people that, that might want to do this, I don't know if they're here tonight or not, um, oh, I didn't know they were speaking. Is that, uh, we appreciate the investment, but it's an investment. It's not like a trailer park that I used to know about years back. This is an investment. And I don't think building houses, you won't be making much more investment than this. And, and I think everything that we put in that ordinance really puts some teeth in it. I mean, I already believe. If, if they can keep that up, I think it'd be a great thing. If it don't, well, you know what? We got a hiccup and we have to address it. Some council might have to address it. But at least we have the teeth in it to have that opportunity. Before, we didn't have it. And I, and I hate to, you know, like I said, I, I respect everybody's decision, I respect the district that it's going into and, and then, and like I said about the calls, anybody can call. I mean, you can line that up, been here a long time. You didn't get on the list and tell everybody to call against it. Everybody called for it. But look at the real, the real project. And let's not play politics and let's just make sure that we enforce it. That's all we can do. And I, 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 I appreciate the investment these people want to make in this community. And it's happened to be Mr. Warren's district. And if he thinks it's all right, I have no problem with it. But I think we have to stay on top of it because, and look, I, I was a mayor pro temp for eight years and I've been around town and I, I feel for Mr. Merrill, but he does have some issues with trailer parks in his area. And I, I hope we can address that before we can get out this council one day. But I understand completely what everybody feel because the experience that they had or the experience that they seen. This is a whole different ballgame, you know? But we just got to stick with it and I hope it works out because I think it is affordable. If they can run it for five hundred dollars a month, that's pretty inexpensive compared to what some people have to spend and they don't have to worry about maintaining it. I think it's an opportunity for people. That's just how I see it, but we all have our own opinion. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
No, sir. Uh, I gotta let everybody speak. Uh, Councilman Book Marca.
Okay, so I don't know if all of you know, but I have a trailer park in my district on Dasbit Road. It is well maintained. Um, it's not a new trailer park, but it looks new because the owner makes sure that all the tenants know how to keep their property. And basically, it's the same guidelines that we just passed in the new ordinance. So the grass is always cut, the trailers are not old looking, you have to keep up with everything there. She doesn't allow just all kinds of riff ramp to move in and out. She will evict you if you're known to be a drug dealer. She doesn't want that in her trailer park. You know, it's things like that that really make a difference. Um, I think putting trailers there, if they are really five hundred dollars a month, that could take people off of the streets, that could pull them out of the homeless shelter. It could really make a difference. And as long as they are following the ordinance, I don't see a problem with it. Um, to me, having these homes that are more affordable for certain people is better than having an empty lot. And it's better than having a graveyard there as well, just in my opinion. But, um, it sounds like a good opportunity. Um, District Two, if y'all not calling the right person, I, I don't know what to tell you. You have to call your councilman if you really are against this or if you're for something. He is the one that's supposed to take all of your calls and concerns, and that's the person you really need to complain to if you have an issue with anything. Um, it's fine to call other people too, but to me, that would be your first call. You would call Warren and let him know how you feel. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, everybody spoke once, now I can do the repeat. Uh, you had your hand up?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ron Davis.
Uh, I take heed to what each and everyone has to say because they are valid interests, okay? It is a big investment, uh, to put into the community, and we can definitely appreciate that. Uh, the enforcement was a major factor. It made, in my decision, because I have some same problem that Councilman Merrill have with some of the trailer parks in the area. The, uh, the code that we put into place, when I went back and look into it, uh, into our charter per se, some of the same thing that we put into place was already there. So some of that is enforcement, okay? So, uh, like dilapidated trailers still being in place and over ten years and all that stuff, I, I went and found some of this stuff. Okay, so it's good to have, but it's better to have the enforcement, okay? Trailer parks can work. I'm not saying that they cannot, okay? But of course, having a building in place, of course, always better, you know? And like I said, the property itself started out that way. What happened, I don't know. There are some things that's coming into the area per se with what, uh, Panat had brought forth as such, affordable housing and stuff. But understand, we have in the city of Newbury also where we have vacant lots that we cannot put trailers on as well, taxpayers, okay? And having to cut grass on it as well. So this, it's a different story for a different time. I do understand that. But what, what I'm saying is that, uh, I stand for the way I feel on this situation, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Merrill, yeah, Jane, hand up.
Yeah, um, getting back to what I was saying earlier, I can understand what, what the lady's trying to do and, and as far as the affordable, five hundred dollars for a trailer, because you can't get a trailer these days for five hundred dollars. You know? My daughter's in a trailer, in a nice trailer park in Cocho. She ain't paying nowhere near five hundred dollars. But what I'm saying is it's a nice trailer park. But one thing, getting back to what I was saying is, this is a catch twenty-two to this situation. You can build a nice trailer park and change these ordinances and all of that, but you can't just leave the rest of the city with the same things that everybody else has been dealing with and the same trailer parks in some other areas without making them accountable as well. And that's just the way I feel about it, and that's, that's all I got to say. I'm done with it.
Anybody else? I have a question for our city attorney, just to make sure, because planning and zoning, I've had this happen before, but I know what happened in the past, but I just want to ask. They made no decision. So it comes to us? And tell me what, what happens when they don't do anything?
Well, when they don't do anything, we can't act on it. You can't act on it for forty-five days. Uh, so that's why the delay, as Jane and I talked about, that's why the delay between the public here and this coming before you guys. So that is the reason for the delay. Now, a planning commission recommendation, if you want to overrule a recommendation, it takes two thirds, which is five votes. But you don't have a recommendation because you didn't have any recommend, the council didn't, I mean, the planning commission didn't come to a conclusion, didn't have a motion, it didn't have a vote one way or the other. So I think it's a majority vote on this question. Uh, it's unlike those situations that we had before where the planning commission did something and you overruled. Because you're not overruling anything because there was nothing done.
Yeah, that took five votes.
So I think, yeah, that would take five.
That made a vote.
And that's why when I came in here, I started looking at my phone. So I pulled up the code of ordinances and I pulled up the Title III statute because I thought the question was coming. And it, I think it's a majority vote.
You said I think. You confident?
Yeah, yeah. That's my call. That's my call. Majority vote. Majority vote.
Of examination.
I thought the same thing was.
Yeah.
No, we all know what we have to get.
Good question, Mr. Mayor.
Do we need dinner?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Do we want to hear from the?
Hmm? I mean.
I would think so.
Yes.
Yeah, she didn't fill out a comment card because she could talk when it's on this item, so.
Okay, for sure.
If you would like to come up, I mean, there's no public back and forth, but you're on the agenda, it's your project.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. Um, so I first want to speak on the five hundred dollars. I'm not sure where that came from. Uh, there's some information from Mr. Benjamin that he did provide incorrectly last meeting. So that is definitely not the rental income for this property. I have also, um, brought with me, um, a list of manufacturers as well as skirting, and our project supersedes your ordinance, uh, with the wind zone, the location, the size and things of that nature. So if I can provide each one of you guys with one of these, um, just same thing that you said about the, oh, the, the, the mobile home park that's in your district, um, you look at the second page, it has some tenant, uh, requirements. So minimum credit score, uh, the north ordinance as well as trash, because there was another question that we had about it, what if someone dumps a couch or something like that on side of the street? So I do have fines in place, uh, for any tenant of mine that puts trash on the streets. Um, the way that the site plan is laid out, each home will be facing the street, so they're only to park in the actual driveway, okay? There's enough space, at least twenty feet for, you know, you can get two, three cars in there. So there is really no need to park on the city street. Um, we don't have any paved roads on our site plan. Uh, let's see, and again, so those top three, uh, manufacturers listed there are local to Louisiana, and those are actual mobile homes probably that you've probably seen around, uh, around town. So most of the homes that are in that area, probably about eighty, ninety percent of those homes are all over ten years old. So everything that we're putting in, even at ten years old, we're far, you know, newer and, and more advanced than, um, what's already there. Equally, this mobile home park will serve as a rental community that will, we're trying not to lose them as a tenant. Our goal is to springboard them into permanent housing structure. So if you guys do have the properties that are already on, that are blighted, then we would obtain those properties, uh, place of either wood frame structure or mobile home or whatever we could get approved for there so that, that those individuals can purchase those as permanent hu, housing structures. There are about four different grant programs that are available, um, the NAOH, the nonprofit cycle affordable housing program, which, um, is for housing developers, um, that serves, uh, individuals that reach or that are equal to or less than the eighty percent income barrier. We have, uh, the home rental development for low, uh, low family. So there are several, uh, factors in place that can secure the city's interest in building this. Uh, we will be co-laborers in getting this project completed because we're looking to beautify the community and bring more in impact fees and things of that nature from this mobile home park. So the ten thousand dollars that Mr. Benjamin spoke about is probably what I'm going to owe you guys. So I wouldn't be able to charge five hundred dollars in rent. I would love to, but I just can't. Okay, so that's just pretty much out of my range. Um, then the housing charge voucher program, they offer to rent all of our units because they do provide a portion of the rent for the tenants. My concern was not having to evict a person behind not being able to pay the two hundred dollars that the housing charge voucher program does not pay. So I'm, have a vested interest in this project because I'm looking for individuals who are looking for a leg up in the community, not looking to stay at the five hundred dollar price point. Okay, so I'm looking for individuals that can afford it, that have jobs, they're active, elderly, like I said, AIDS, HIV patients, home, homeless, uh, veterans, things of that nature that are looking for something nicer. Now, if you look at the first page, uh, there, you see that the way we design our mobile home, uh, structures is so that the siding goes all the way down to the bottom, okay? So it doesn't have the physical appearance of a mobile home park. Okay, so if you look at the second picture, well, the one that's in the middle, the, the skirting at the bottom, it is metal, okay? So it matches the aesthetics alongside the porch as well. And then the one at the very bottom is another option, okay? So it gives the look of a brick, uh, finish, but it's actually metal and it's just like[1708.48] So, it gives the look of a brick, uh, finish, but it's actually metal, and it's just like a, um, a, a metal, exactly, yes. So, it gives it that look and that curb appeal to match the aesthetics of, of the community.
Okay. Oh, we can't talk.
No, you can ask questions.
Rules can change. So...
Nothing changed. Councilman Dan Dahl?
The, uh, Mo, Mo, do y'all take the wheels off?
So, we can demobilize the unit. We would have to, uh, remove the, uh, hitch and permanently affix it to the land. So, that is definitely possible, if that is something that you guys are requiring, yes.
Because, um, I know it could affect, um, insurance. This is, I'm, this is coming back from a while back. If you take the hitch off and you take the wheels off, it becomes more of a movable home than a mobile home.
It's actually what we call a permanent structure.
Right. Because we talked about years back with the modular homes, we went and looked at something, remember Fred?
I know.
Versus a mobile, they would come here with wheels in the head, and you would take that off and skirt them, so it's really, makes it better look, and it makes it more...
Came and the wheels weren't attached.
Right.
They came on a trailer.
Because that would be something that would be nice, instead of having that hitch sticking out.
That's what we wanna do.
Okay.
We want to have the hitch removed.
Okay.
To give it more of a home feel.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Dave.
The financing and everything like that, um, these companies that you use, is it compared to as far as how many people, income-wise, that's, that's in that home, as far as for the approval?
Well, it goes based on their rent. I'm sorry, their income. So, the Housing Trust Voucher Program and any other program that provides portion of the rental assistance goes based on what that particular person makes annually. And so, it's a scale, so as long as they... I'm sorry?
The reason I'm saying that, because the present, that we were presented to by, of course, not, on a little small house that they wanna do, to be able to help people that can't afford to buy a home, and they showed us a scale. And the scale went by how many people using their income.
Right.
In that household, went up to sixty-eight thousand for maybe six people in there, and then went all the way down to like thirty-eight or forty thousand for three people in there. So, it wasn't just one person income, so there was based on everybody's income in there, but still being able to be able to afford, to be able to buy one of those homes.
Right, that's for purchase, and these are for rental. So, the rental, uh, scale is slightly different. So, it, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
No, it, so we don't determine what they are charged for rent, okay? We set the rental price, and then the agency determines what they're willing to pay. And so, we negotiate with the agency to make sure that the tenant doesn't have to pay much over, you know, market value for the property.
Now, what about their income? Is it up to, let's say, if they're making forty thousand dollars a year?
Well, the average income in the area is probably about forty thousand dollars. So, those are, that's our ideal market.
And that's, that's gonna determine as much as how much the, the property, as far as it'll be costing and everything. I'm looking at these, they are nice, but I'm saying they look like a modular home, to be honest with you.
Right, right.
You know? Right.
Well, you know, the title comes and it's labeled "mobile home," so although it gives the aesthetics of a modular, you know, we do, I do wanna make it clear that it is a mobile home.
Well, these look good, you know, and it's not nothing about what you wanna do, but if I had some trails like that that were in my area that were updated and stuff like that, that's fine. But I like, you know, what we're doing, like Mr. Dahl talked about and everybody, I like the idea that we updating the, the, just all the stuff for trail parks, and people coming in with new ones. But I just can't allow to keep getting phone calls from people that's in the same areas, what I'm talking about, and they seeing new trailer parks come up, and then we can't enforce, we need to be able to enforce something on them as well.
Right.
And that's the way I feel about it.
And I totally agree.
Because one person, you can do this, but if everything is like this, it's, it's not, it's not right for those people that stand in those areas.
Exactly.
They should be able to get the same type of upgrade, like what you're doing.
Right, that's true.
And feel good about it.
Right.
Because they, some other new people moving in with new trailer parks. I'm just looking out for the whole picture.
Right, so if you have any properties that you wanna sell to me, then that's fine. We can talk about it. Because I understand what you're saying. You don't want a one, one district to feel, you know, slighted, and the other district doesn't have it. But like I said, we're looking for a long-term relationship, not something just short-term.
What I'm talking to you about, I brought that up in front of the council before.
Right. But that's, you know, business is business, so that's...
I have no problem with updating for new trailer parks to come in and what we need to do. But I just can't put aside the other trailer park that's in my area.
Right.
Where other people...
I totally understand, you know? It just has to be a line of delineation between what I'm doing and what they're doing, because if that's your district and those mobile homes are, they have that, you know, un-lovable curb appeal, then, you know, you have to...
Good way to put it.
...focal down with them, you know?
Some of those areas do have...
We have to set the bar and set the standard.
Like they talked about, like the area where Ms. Brooke was talking about, that's a nice area. But in some of those areas where Troy was talking about on Troy Road, those areas are not compared to what I'm talking about. You probably want to say...
I know, exactly what you're talking about.
Not even close.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, first of all, thank, thank you for investing in our city.
Thank you.
Not to go against the naysayers or the yeasayers, but you know, America is a land of opportunities, right?
Right.
And what David said, the individuals that David's talking about will have an opportunity to live in something better if they choose to do so.
Yes.
So, the lateral move is an opportunity.
Right.
And I'm all about opportunities for our citizens in our city. And, and, and you know, this project, we'll have our eyes on it, and, and I'm sure, and I'll ask you the question, this is not your first one?
No.
And so, your other projects seem to be very successful.
Oh, yes, definitely. Uh, like I told the zoning committee, that you guys have some of the most strictest policies and procedures I've ever seen, but, you know, it's needed, because I do see what's going on in the community. It's an easy way for somebody, a developer, to come in and put them there and make money and go on, you know? I see that all over. So, I'm here, I'm in North Carolina, and I'm in Texas as well. So, I see a lot, but I can only do so much, you know? Um, if I had unlimited bank account, we wouldn't have no problems. But yeah, I totally understand.
But thank you again, and hopefully, hopefully we lead by example.
Yes.
And that this is a, you know, a figure point for our community.
Yes.
That we can give opportunities to some of our people that are less disadvantaged and not as successful to move this, uh, because I'm sure if you go around and look at mobile homes that people are living in, and David is absolutely correct, I know exactly what you're saying, and they can choose to live in something like this, I think that makes a world of difference, and increase their morale and their vision on life.
Right, so, e- exactly what you're saying is, I had, um, I own another mobile home park here as well, but I had the, the units demolished, because they were comfortable living like that, and I wasn't comfortable renting it. So, I just tore them down.
Great point.
Yeah, I, I can't.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Also wanna thank you for coming and speaking to us. I haven't heard you speak about it yet, and just seeing all these rules for the lease agreements.
Yes.
That's amazing. That's really good. Um, I found out the trailer park that's in my area is almost thirty years old. It does not look that old. It's, it's really good what can happen if the owner, like, takes charge.
Has a vested interest.
Fakes rules and really sticks to those rules, so you sound like you're gonna do the right thing.
Yes, and, and I'm, I'm not allowing other people to bring in mobile homes. I wanna make that clear. We will retain ownership of all twenty of these mobile homes.
Okay.
So, for the sake of our, our, who we have to answer to, our lender, you know, we have to have these units. We have to have an insured, a specific value, so that we can get the best interest rate possible, so that we can place these units here.
Okay.
And so, I'm, like, like I said earlier, I'm looking for, you know, a, a working relationship, so that we can obtain grant funding, so that I can build better units. And then now that the city can make more money off of me, I don't, I don't mind that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Other question?
Yes, sir.
Do you do developments and construction other than mobile homes?
Oh, definitely, yes. So, we have our VA builder's permit, um, so we do go into homes and make them ADA compliant, adding in the ramps, the, uh, exit door in the master bedroom, the sidewalk from there, all the way to where the vehicle is parked. Um, we are in the lane of affordable housing, and we're trying to kinda expand our, our brand into doing some more of luxury homes, because of course, like I said, we're, we're, we want to be a springboard for those individuals. So, now that they can afford to live here, we are putting jobs in the community, then we can springboard them to somewhere else, and then, and continue to, to make it work, instead of grandfathering individuals in under a Section Eight program. You know, the mom is Section Eight, then the kids become Section Eight, they grow up, their kid's Section Eight. So, we wanna change, if we're gonna change the ordinance, we gotta change the aesthetics, the visual aesthetics, because some people, you know, can, they hear, they, they hear with their eyes, okay? So, they see something different, they're not gonna act different, okay?
Stick around for a couple agenda items down the...
Ask your kids. No problem.
Looking for a consultant, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Anybody else have anything else?
I'm good.
Public can't speak. She's, she's on the agenda. She's on the agenda, it's different, and you know we don't have public back and forth. You, you spoke at the beginning. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Any other council member have anything to say?
No, no, man.
Not on this venue.
No. Any other remarks from the council members? Everybody good?
Hmm.
No more questions, anything? All right, then I ask you to vote your machines. Thank you. Five B. Madam Clerk? What? Yeah, yeah, we don't, you know, we don't have to. Done, yeah. If we can.
Resolution number twenty-five eighty-nine. A resolution taking action on the site plan submitted by Edmund Construction Company, LLC, for a parcel of property located at the corner of West Persian Street and Southwest South Street.
I need a motion. Motion by Mayor Plutemberg, you go, Selah. I need a second. Uh, Councilman Warren White, is there any discussion on this?
The, um, site plan that, uh, I'm sorry.
No. Go ahead. Councilman Ron Davis.
That's presented, does it meet all of our new, uh, criteria that was set forth already? Have we, do we, do we know this as of this point?
No. We don't. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we did hire LaBiche Engineering, and they did coordinate all of the offsets and everything, um, with Jane to make sure that the unit was placed within the requirements of the city. Um, we did have a survey as well. So, I know that it hasn't been officially, um, checkmarked as it, it's in place, but I can assure you that what they created was definitely...
In the new ordinance, are you familiar with that new ordinance? Have you looked at that new ordinance?
I listened to the July, um...
Because the one thing that I didn't see when you submitted this was there has to be a green space.
Yes.
That's, that's the big thing that, that we put in place, that, that has to happen.
Right. And then the zoning and planning committee, they, they did ask me about planting trees, and I told them that each individual lot would have trees planted.
Right, but this is like a common green space, like a, you know, uh, for everybody to use.
That's what I saw. That's what I saw.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
We might have been forward, the couple, we was gonna get back to it. Still wanna see if we can look into doing something to be able to put some pressure on, to update some of the trails.
And, and that's not, that's a separate issue, but as, as I said last time, we're gonna do it through compliance, and I don't have one problem with it. I think everybody up here realizes what you're going through in your district and sees, we've all go there, we all see, so I don't think you're gonna have a problem. But I, I know you need to get it out there, so people know you're not forgetting about it, but we won't forget about it. Yes, sir.
So, Mayor, oh, how, are we voting on a site plan that we don't have yet?
That's why we asking these questions, because I, I'm not positive...
Will we be able to see a site plan?
Well, I'm gonna call Jane, if you don't mind. Jane, can you come up? Because that, that's what I need to know. Because it has to show that green space, you know, just everything in our new ordinance, it has to have all hard surface parking, it has to have all the, the requirements. I wanna make sure before we, we vote on it.
Yes, I think with, with adoption of the new ordinance, then a site, the site plan would need to be revised. And, um, site plans typically either go to the planning commission, or they're, they're reviewed in-house. It just depends. This one came to the planning commission, because it came with a zoning change.
Right.
Um, but, um, I think LaBiche Engineering will, um, you know, do the revisions to, to the plot.
Then can we bring it back with the site plan? I, I don't know with the procedure, but to me, we should bring it back with the approved site plan.
You could bring it back to the council? It wouldn't go back to the commission?
Or we could reword it. No, we can do it in-house, but, but, but I don't wanna vote on it. Unless you tell me, you know, you either need to come back to the House, Council, or we need to state, which we can do quickly, we need to state everything it has to include.
Unless you want it to be contingent upon the revisions to the site plan and go through the development team and yourself.
Yes, yes.
And not come back to the council for another vote.
Uh, I would like to see it, yeah.
Yeah, you see, I mean, we, I think we wanna know what we're voting on.
Okay.
Uh, you know, just, just listening. I think we probably need to, it probably does need to come back, so that we...
Make sure everything is right.
We hanging a lot on this new ordinance. I mean, I listened to all the discussion. If we're gonna, we have a new ordinance, if we believe it's gonna work, we probably should see it on paper.
Correct.
No offense to anybody, but I think that to vote on it, it needs to, we need to know before we vote that it, or my council needs to know that it matches.
In addition to that, there, it did, the review did go through the development team, and there were some conditions that were placed on relative to the installation of infrastructure, um, water main...
I bet you has to pay for some fire hydrants.
Upgrading the fire hydrants, and they're aware of what...
No, but I think if we put it all on the plan, everybody's gonna be more comfortable.
Right.
I don't wanna speak for my council, but I'll speak for my council.
Right.
I think everybody would rather see it.
Yeah.
Uh, we can go around and talk about it. Councilman Dahl?
Okay. When we went to rezoning, they didn't have an opinion on it, and it came to us, and we, we voted on it.
We're now them.
Okay. If it didn't go to rezoning, the site plan still would have to go to planning, zoning?
No.
It'd be in-house?
No, it...
No, if we approve it, we can approve it here. So, most... But I wanna know what we approve.
Yeah, but most site plans, does it go through planning, zoning?
It goes, plans on it first.
Typically, it's not written in the subdivision ordinance, like, you know, all of the other requirements are. So, um, um, some of the site plan reviews have been done in-house.
Yeah.
Um, and didn't come to the planning commission or the council. This one did, because it wa, it included a zoning change.
Okay.
And that's why it did. So, uh, it does not have to go back to the planning commission, unless Jeff doesn't agree.
So, you're saying it doesn't have to go back?
No.
Because, uh, I don't wanna miss a step, just 'cause they didn't make a call on it, I just don't wanna miss a step. And if it's in-house, I have no problem with in-house. Could we do that with a lot of development in the city? It doesn't go through yards, it goes right through to our in-house. I have no problem with that. I just didn't wanna miss a step, just 'cause they didn't make a decision on the zoning, and we did. That's all. And we have a lot of construction projects that goes right to in-house, doesn't go to them.
And it was their choice not to make a decision.
Yeah.
They actually, they actually decided to defer to the council, so it's where it needs to be.
Not...
Yeah, and I have no problem with that. I just don't wanna, you know? I just wanna make sure we doing that the right steps.
I understand.
Because I would like to see a site plan before I vote on it.
I think you would all feel more comfortable looking at it.
Trust everybody.
But that rezoning made a difference, like, like you said.
Yeah. Yeah, rezoning is...
Okay. Thank you.
If, if, if appropriate, I would make a substitute motion to defer till the site plan is, is upgraded, updated, and the, uh, in-house is appro, gets approval from the staff. If you'd, uh, no, if you'd just defer it till it's, till it's ready and bring it back to the council, after the staff approves it or gets it to where they can present it, they comfortable presenting it.
I'm following that. I mean, I think we all wanna see it.
Yep. Absolutely. And then that's my whole point, is that we wanna bring it back to us, so we can see and feel comfortable.
Talking about it, because I know what you voted on, something you didn't see.
Exactly. So, I'll support that.
But I'll, but I'll second your motion, but just a short comment. I think we all preached about enforcement and oversight with this new ordinance, so I think it's critical that we all look at it and, and, and look at it and create some oversight. I think it's a great woman.
Everybody's finished discussion, then I have a motion on the floor. And a second, uh, Councilor Plutemberg, you go, Selah. Everybody understand? Need to read it or anything? Just to defer. Okay, so it's only to defer till we get a site plan. Everybody good with that?
I can be as soon as next minute, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we have a motion on the second floor. Any questions or comments? Everybody's good? Please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. And as soon as we can get that back to get it to Jane, get it to all of us, then it'll come back to a council meeting. Thank you. Uh, what's the deadline for next meeting?
Next Wednesday.
I don't know if you have it till next Wednesday, but next Wednesday's the deadline to get on the next council meeting. Thank you all. Six A, Madam Clerk.
A discussion related to spurring economic growth, investment, homeownership and property development through the transfer of adjudicated properties in the city of New Iberia.
Okay, this item is on. We have, which is a good thing, we have interest in development, we have interest in not only the item we just spoke about for a while, but we have, as we had called their names before, Panat and Corey, looking at some affordable housing that would prompt some homeownership. Our challenge is, and it's not just in the West End, it's all over town, we have 588 adjudicated properties. They're in every district, okay? We need to get a handle on that and deal with them and try to get these back in commerce and represent people and not blight, okay, or empty lots.
Right.
So it's up to us to try to build value. So the point of this is not to give something away for nothing. I don't want people criticizing us that, oh, we doing some, you know, bad thing. What we're doing is trying to create value. You're not gonna sell property if 588 is sitting there and we have no offers. We have product with no market. So I think it's up to us as community leaders to try to create a market. So working with Panat and them is one avenue. You, everybody's familiar with Mota Own, they do that in Lafayette. We went and visited Lafayette. We'd like to steal that, you know, make it our own, where you could keep a piece of property up and end up with it. That's one example. The more complicated example, and it'll end up being turned over to Jeff to talk to us, but the more complicated is taxes are owed. In many instances, I researched a couple and there was $500 worth of taxes owed, and then there was $4,000 of fines and grass cut. So that gets piled on and piled on and you have a piece of property that's worth $5,000 probably in an open market and it's got $4,500 worth of fines on it, okay? Nothing is gonna happen with that property, okay? So if you can't have affordable housing, if you can't have people living in an area, I don't know how you expect businesses to come back. I don't know how you expect to uplift an area. So it's a challenge. Those taxes are owed. When you look at the list, it's the parish, it's the school board, it's a whole list. It's the sheriff, it's a whole list of things. So there's processes we're gonna have to go through and we're not gonna be able to give away everybody's taxes. We can probably get some partnerships going. We can probably say on hours, we can leave the fines. I've helped people before within certain conditions. There's probably a way that we can work some of that to reduce the burden on somebody developing that property. And that's where we create value on something that is penalized and don't have value right now. So that's the easy part, okay? The hard part is the mechanics of doing it. So it's not gonna be easy and it's not gonna be quick. Some of the first houses, they're, first properties they're trying to put houses on, they're actually gonna buy that property from somebody. Somebody has either redeemed it or owns it. They're gonna have to deal with that. The next group that they showed me, they want to do four houses now and they want to do four more next year. I'm all for them making eight people own houses. I think that's wonderful. The next four are adjudicated properties. So if we start now and start thinking about how we can proceed and the mechanics of all of this, we might be able to accommodate. I mean, I understand their philosophy is you uplift an area, you do four houses, then you do four more, then you do four more. And that momentum, momentum builds momentum, just like us getting those businesses and making things happen. You end up that possibly some individuals will fix their houses, possibly some other developer will come in and flip a couple of houses, but improve them along the way. Because we've got to find a way to get some reinvestment. We've been sitting up here for eight years and we're just having increased adjudicated properties. So anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff because I would like him, because I don't want to paint a picture that this is easy and gonna happen overnight. I would like him to kind of give us some of the steps and, you know, I'll have to go over this with Corey and Panat or tell them to watch the meeting because it's not gonna be easy. But I will, Jeff and I have been discussing this and I would just like y'all to hear, that's why I put it on here. It's not a no, but we got some steps.
Yeah, there are ways to do things. And I want to just kind of back up and give an explanation of what we, what we mean when we say adjudicated property. If you own a piece of property and you don't pay the taxes, the taxes are due by December 31st. And in the June of the following year, there will be a tax sale schedule. And what the law says is that the owners of the property and anybody who has an interest is supposed to get notice of the tax sale and an opportunity to pay the taxes current or to show up at the sale and bid. If the sale takes place, and it takes place around June, and there's a list of properties that are affected, the parish has a similar list for parish taxes. When those properties come up, two things can happen. One is a private person can buy the property, business or individual or whatever. And that's buying property at a tax sale. If the private person buys the property at the tax sale, then the landowner who lost the property can, within three years, undo that sale by redeeming the property. If they don't redeem the property and five years goes by, then certain rights of the landowner are cut off and the person who has bought the property at tax sale can go to court and through a process, through the court, cure the tax title. And what that involves is giving another notice to the person who lost the property to say, if you have any legal objections to this, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace because we're gonna confirm the tax title on this private person. We have a lot of properties in town that have been balked by people. Some people go through that extra five-year step. Some people haven't done it yet or won't do it. But a private, a tax sale to a person, a private person can be redeemed within that three-year period, but we really don't have control over whether they do that or not. You know, that's kind of out of our hands. But if the property goes to tax sale and nobody buys the property, then it's adjudicated to the city. And it's adjudicated to the parish if it's a parish tax sale. That kind of puts it in limbo. And as long as it's adjudicated to the city and we haven't done anything with it through the law, then the person can come back and redeem the property and get it back. If it's on the adjudication list, there are ways to get it off the adjudication list and there's several things that we can do as city government. One thing that we can do is that we can, under part of the statute that people refer to as Mota Own, we can agree to sell the property at a price that we fixed to someone who's adjacent to the property, right next door, who's maintained it for a year and can prove it. So if we have a neighbor who takes care of the property for long enough, they can get a good deal and we have the ability to transfer it at a low price. So if that demand is there, I think we can meet it. Another thing that we can do is we can sell the property, adjudicated property, and in that process, we either fix the amount of the sale price at all the fines and taxes, or we get an appraisal and we have a bidding process where we start with two-thirds of the appraised value. Or we say, we're just gonna sell it to the highest bidder. So we can offer that property. Anybody who buys that property then has to go back after they buy it and prove that the person who lost the property got notice of that process. And that is, that takes time. And Lafayette put together a system where they have a department, they had a guy who did that. And, you know, it cost them about $1,500 a property to process those properties. And those are properties that people want because if people don't want them, they're not gonna sell. So we give people the opportunity to purchase property from us, but to clear the title, they have to prove that notice, another notice was given to the landowner to come back and get the property. So we can sell adjudicated properties those ways. Now, if you have a property that's got a bunch of taxes or some taxes and a bunch of fines and other things, the price doesn't have to be the total of all that amount. It can be, you know, whatever the maximum bid will be, but it's like a sheriff's sale. It's an auction, it's the highest bidder. So that's all we can deal with, with adjudicated properties. And I think the challenge for adjudicated properties is we can work with people who want the property. I know years ago, under a different administration, there was an effort to get rid of adjudicated properties and give them to nonprofits. These properties can be transferred to nonprofits without payment of a price if it's a 501, whatever. Yeah, there are a couple of different categories in the statute. Can be transferred to them without payment if they're nonprofits. What we found way in the past was that the nonprofits would apply and people would come and pay the taxes and take them back and the nonprofits said, no, it's not worth the trouble. But if we can find people who want the properties, we can work with them through that process. There's another thing we have to be concerned about, and that is the state constitution says that we can't give away public property. We try to be very careful about how we deal with public funds and public things and we try to work closely with the auditors. If y'all remember when we did the One Block at a Time program, we put roofs on people's houses, we were very careful to have an income qualification. We were very careful to have a random selection. And that was a program we characterized as aid to the needy because that's an exception to the, to one of the rules in the state constitution about giving away public things. We can give away public things in support of the needy or under an objective program. One of the other exceptions in the, to prohibited donations in the constitution, and there are 15 of them, but one of the other exceptions is if we have property that in an administrative proceeding, which is more red tape, has determined, has been determined that it's blighted and we have, let's see how they put it. We have a hearing officer that we appoint to approve a plan of redevelopment. We can cut back taxes and fines and penalties for a person who is not the owner of the property or somebody related to them, but for a purchaser. So if we have a purchaser, we can work with fines and penalties either by having a sale of the property or by eliminating taxes when they have a private sale of the property. So this other, this thing here where we eliminate taxes and charges because a property has been blighted, but it's gonna be redeveloped according to an approved redevelopment plan, that does not require adjudicated property, that doesn't require adjudication. That's any property that we could use. But the idea is we can't give anything away unless we get something for it. And the something that we get for it is development that people wouldn't do otherwise. It's the basics of economic incentives, you know? We put the sewer in because it brings the project. We build the road because it brings the project. We can forgive some taxes if it brings the project. The, the big challenge here, which is why I hoped Edmund Construction was gonna stick around, was we have a lot to sell. And we're open for business. And, you know, we would like to.
Put the map up, Laney.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, this has gone on for so long.
We just got a new GIS system and Laney learned how to use it and she's cranking out some maps. This is 580-something adjudicated property. What it doesn't have is 114 or 118 trailers. Because in those instances, someone might own the trailer and the property separately, so it's complicated. So we didn't put the trailers. But that shows you the bulk, I mean, the massive problem that we have in our community is to try to get that back in commerce, get that to where people live there. You know, it affects all of our neighborhoods, it affects all of our property values, and none of us want to represent an impulot.
We're gonna do with Civic Source?
We'll do some things with Civic Source. This is separate from Civic Source. Civic Source will probably always do something for us. Will they do everything? No. We're looking, no criticism to them, but they were very useful for a while because the most desirable property sold and they have about a $5,000 fee on everything we ever sell. That was fine when properties were worth 40,000 or $50,000. When a lot's worth 5,000, it's a hard pill to swallow to spend five more with Civic Source. So I'm not knocking them. They have been good for us, but they're kind of at, the reason we're trying to find new things, visiting Lafayette, we're looking for alternatives that don't cost people that much money.
The, and Civic Source does two things for us. One, they handle our tax sales. And that's a complicated process.
They can keep that.
Anybody who has, I mean, if you've ever seen the data on the notices they have to give, it's incredible. Anybody, the, there's a Supreme Court case that says anytime you take away a property interest of a person, you have to give them notice of what you're gonna do and an opportunity to protect their interest. Which is why we have public hearings before we do demolitions. It's the same thing. It's a due process. So the due process stuff that they do for tax sales is huge. You know, if you've got a landowner, if you've got a mortgage holder, if you've got heirs and all that, they're supposed to give them notice of the tax sale. And if they don't, the tax sale's no good. So that is, that is a very important thing that they do. Adjudicated properties has not been as successful. They have a process that they follow where they give the notices. You know, they, they have a bid process that they handle for us, they give the notices, they issue a title insurance policy at the end. It's got a ton of exceptions in it. But that's an expensive process and I think the low-hanging fruit got picked, you know?
The nice ones are gone.
The nice ones are gone. So we've been meeting with McKinley James, who if y'all remember is the bald, black guy with the really cool beard.
He's cool, man.
Yeah, so we're meeting with him and I'm gonna talk to him again about the process. We talked about having a Lafayette-type process where we have an employee who does that for us and processes that stuff for people. But, you know, we're thinking that maybe the better way to do it would be to contract that out by, by property. You know, so if there's a target property, we get, you know, to work on that and figure out a way to sell that. So I'll be talking to McKinley about that because he came back to us with a proposal to kind of handle it that way. This is not the, it's not the most urgent thing that we have to do, you know, but we need to get on it. And, you know, I've talked to the mayor about bringing McKinley or somebody in to help us to do that because we need, yeah, we need some help. We need some help with that. But, you know, we're gonna be looking for ways to take some of this property and put it back into commerce because, you know, an empty property, if it's got a building on and it's just gonna slide down to the demolition list and then demolish it and then we got, you know, an empty lot, we're cutting grass and it's just a mess. So, you know, we want to, we want to help people move up that ladder, but we got too many properties that are moving from owner-occupied to rental, to vacant, to demolition, to grass cut. And all the way down the line, each step, it costs us money. So, so we're gonna look at some of these possibilities and, you know, I'm gonna get with the mayor and we'll talk to McKinley and other people about that. But to me, the key, I mean, Panat and Corey, that's a great, a great possibility. Anybody who wants to invest in, you know, our town, we've got, we've got these properties in every district. We got both sides of the volume, believe me. We got, we got problems everywhere that we want to solve. So I think the key to this, the tricky part of this has, I think, always been demand. You know, we need to find people who want stuff. If people want stuff, we can deal with it. If they don't want it, it's really hard. It's really hard for us to deal with it because if there's no demand, there's no value. If there's no value, it's a liability.
Y'all forgot a question.
Yes.
I have a constituent of mine that has adjudicated property right next to her home. We talked about it a while back. I got with Matt on it. He sent me the information for Civic Source for the call and find out who the owner was, they sent everything. And I was told that if it's possible, like I heard you say something about, if they keep up the grass and cut the grass and stuff on that property that they, they want, would that be something that would help them to be able to purchase that property also?
We don't have it in place yet.
I know, but I'm just trying, I told him I'm gonna get back with him.
Yeah.
But she's interested in it. It's right next to her house.
No, that's a good thing. I think it's some steps we got to take to do it, but that's why we went to Lafayette to see how they did it.
Right, right.
I think we have to take some, I don't think it's, we can't turn the button on immediately, but I'd like to see that happen because what if we move 10 to 12 of them? That's, that's, that's six of six. That's a win. I'll take it.
And that house is not in a bad neighborhood, but it's just that it, it went down like that and the grass went up high and it's adjudicated and she felt that if she could buy it, it would be good for her because it's right next to her property.
Yeah.
Well, there's a statute that talks about how adjudicated property is offered for sale.
Okay.
And then there's a paragraph B. This is notwithstanding provisions of subsection A of this section, the governing authority of each political subdivision may allow an adjoining landowner to purchase adjudicated property for any price set by the governing authority without public bidding at a public meeting of the governing authority, provided that the governing authority of an applicable political subdivision determines that the adjoining landowner has maintained the adjudicated property for a period of one year prior to the sale.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Such a sale shall be deemed a public sale under the provisions of this subpart.
That's what I need to know.
I don't think we can sell it for nothing, you know, but we can make a deal.
Right, right. So we wouldn't have to go through.
Do we need an ordinance? Yes, so the first, the time's got to start from after we do an ordinance because we got to be able to prove it.
Okay.
So it's kind of on us.
I'm trying to get the information so I can make sure it's done right.
I know, but I don't want you to, you know, you're such a good salesman. I don't want you to sell something you can't sell yet. You know what I mean?
Attorney.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So I think what we need to do, I know I'm speaking, you know, Jeff's the attorney, but we're gonna have to pass an ordinance and say, okay, time's up now and figure out a quick way to document that.
Okay, because I told you I was gonna get back with her, but she's very interested in going with the process.
You know, you sell that call, man.
I'm not sure we need, I'm not sure we need the big ordinance to do that sale.
Well, we need a small ordinance to do that.
But we need a sale about that property.
Okay. But Jeff, does that, would that property still come under criteria of the original owner can retain, can go back and retain ownership within a five-year period?
Three years. I don't know.
Generally for the properties, we don't deal with them till five years goes by.
Right.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
That's cool.
Yeah, because that's why we put the years on the map. We have the map color-coded and so the ones we're, we're not really gonna act on unless the five years of them.
They used to be 18 once and then it went to three years.
Bloody they're ripe, huh?
Yeah, oh yeah, we got a bunch of them that.
Not crossing that threshold.
No. And we have a bunch of them that have the right color. Yes, sir.
I know we have a lot of things going on, but I can tell you that I've been getting a lot of calls about grass, blighted houses and the invasion of critters and rodents and the quality of life for the neighbors is unbearable for some. And I would like to be helpful or, and volunteer to do whatever I can to brainstorm on how we can expedite the process of addressing those issues. I mean, it's been years we've been trying to, I know Mr. Bruce Art sat here for a couple of years and been trying to get a house torn down and it's possums and raccoons and it's not mice and it's not bugs, it's big animals that are, that are in. I got one neighbor down the street from me caught two rats in a trap in his utility room inside of his house. And there's a, there's a problem property right next door. And there's a, there's a problem property right next door. So there is a sense of urgency for me to try and help, and I'm sure you would all agree, that if your constituents, your neighbors, your family are calling you because there are rats in their house because of, and they feel it's coming from a blighted property next door or down the street, there is a sense of urgency. And I, I wouldn't wanna live like that, and I don't think anybody does, in our community deserves to live like that. We have to find a way to expedite things in any way possible.
Legally.
Legally, obviously, yes. But, I mean, and it don't matter what part of town.
That's right.
It's, it's everywhere, tall grass, problems.
I thought the half million dollar grant was gonna be quick, we put up, uh-
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, I, I'm saying, I, I, yes, we're getting the calls and, and it's, I don't, I don't know what to tell them anymore.
Grass, um, we're gonna develop a portal. Okay, we're looking at how Lafayette did it, and I met with their director last week. And so they have a portal and they actually bid out grass cutting, okay? Which I'm not opposed to doing. I, I know that Public Works can't keep up and I know they're shorthanded. So we're gonna develop a portal, I bet nine men on that today.
Yeah, that'll work.
And people would actually be able to bid. So my concept on the, we'll do one at a time. My concept on the grass is Public Works will continue to cut, of course, all of our parks, all of our right-of-ways, all those state right-of-ways that we're stuck with cutting for a little bit cheaper, although they gave us a raise. It still don't cover everything, but thank God, you know, they gave us a raise. So we'll continue to do all of that. But all of these properties that we turn in, as, as mayor, mayor pro temp, council members, all those ones that we turn in, I really wish we could cut those faster. You know, you have that long process of notification, you're gonna add it to their font. I realize we can't get out of the thirty days, but when they're ready, you might have fifty ready at once, and we only have so many, I'm not, I'm not crying, but it's just the truth. If Public Works gotta pick between go and work on a sidewalk, go and work on a street, go and work on some drainage issues or cut grass, we end up splitting our people and they're all over the place and nothing's getting finished. I mean, I see it, if you don't, if you don't have enough soldiers, you can't fight that many battles. So talking to Lafayette, and they're much bigger than us and have more resources than us, but they were having the same problems, just on a bigger scale. So they were like, get yourself a portal, get it, it goes to the low bidder, it's competitive, it's not gonna cost you, uh, pennies more to cut it, and you're gonna be able to do much more, you know. It's economic development in a way, I mean, it's making local businesses, you know, who qualify to do this, it's giving people work. So I'm all for that, so, so that's where I think we could speed up the grass.
Definitely, definitely.
Okay?
'Cause a lot of our constituents that we all get calls from would be a lot more happier if they're over the thirty days, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the chronic ones, we have to figure it-
It's over thirty days, and, you know.
And the chronic grass cutting, we could put them on a rotation if we had enough people, because there's people that use this as their lawn service. We're not cheap, we don't do a great job, we're not lawn people. So when you cut the grass, the grass gets cut, but I mean, we're not made to, we're not a grass company. We're not somebody who does a landscape job, that's not, that, that's not what government does. But they still use this as their lawn service, I don't understand that. So there are some that, you know, we had one that had two days to go. If they had known there was two days to go, the city would've cut in two days and sent those people a bill. All the neighbors got together and cut it, I mean, I know they just happen to you. But if we could put them on a rotation, and if you read the statute, you can, um, that would be another way. But again, it doesn't pay to put them on a rotation if I don't have the soldiers. So I think that portal's gonna be a way to, to do that.
How does a portal work?
You know, I'm just figuring it out myself, 'cause I couldn't log on today.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you, uh, download on all that.
But, but you log, you log on, you get registered. People have to be registered before they can go into the portal, 'cause you gotta know they have the right insurance, you gotta have your ten ninety-nine, you gotta have, you know, if it's huge stuff, they gotta have licenses, you know, it just depends. So you gotta have all of that in place, all the tax information and everything. So not anybody can go to the portal and say, I'm gonna cut that for five dollars, I mean, you can't do it.
Okay.
So, one, you pre-register people, which that's a process. And then after you have your group of qualified contractors, then you put it on, they log on, they use their password, they go in a portal and they bid on it. I don't know the timeframe yet, we're just looking at it. I don't know if you bid it for, you know, how many days you gotta bid it for, the legality of that. You know, if it's five days and then you can go. I don't know if it's quicker than that, that, uh, 'cause our properties will pop up and then we get in a cycle. Our grass grows the same all over town, so you end up with, uh, three weeks are up and now it's twelve inches on every lot in town that you cut. So that's the beauty of this, was we would have some warriors. We would have, you know, ten other, ten other companies or ten other sets of lawnmowers.
Okay.
Um, but I, I can't give you everything, but I'll come back and tell you. We, we all trying to figure that out.
Thank you.
Just one more comment, if I can.
Sure.
Um, I, I definitely support, coming from, from an industry that uses subcontractors, I, I support that, your efforts in that one hundred percent to get more-
We've been in the same business.
Yes, to get more soldiers, more boots on the ground, to help us get this quality of life issue.
Yeah, we couldn't build a commercial.
'Cause that's, that's, that's what I, I mean, I truly feel, I mean, I've looked, some of the people that are calling me, it's horrible.
It is, it is.
And no, and again, so whatever subcontractors we can use on, as you're doing with the sewer and drainage clean-out and cameras.
Yeah.
Perfect example, you're making it happen because you got the right tools.
I was taking work, I guess I thought like a contractor, I've been for forty years. I was taking work from my people, okay? Whoa, whoa, my people can't keep up. I'm not taking work from them and the workload will never go away. The one thing about this job, you never run out of work. So it took me a while to realize I'm not gonna be able to build my force up big enough 'cause we can't afford to, and, and not that many people wanna work in civil service. So this is a way that, you know, again, the million-dollar buildings that we build, we couldn't build them without subcontractors. So I'm realizing the animal I gotta crack, I need some warriors. So that's the grass cut, yes, sir?
Mayor, going back to the houses.
That's where I was heading next.
We still have an issue if someone has a house, someone passed, the family gets, there's twelve heirs. That's what we're having a problem with, to, to identify all the heirs of the home before we get approval to do anything? Or is it a percentage of the owners that can make that call?
It's all of them. We have some tied up, I mean, I'll let Jeff speak on that, but we have some tied up we can't move on. Everybody got a sign.
It just, it just slows the process. If, if we have a voluntary situation, like with our grants, you know, we, we have grant money for demolitions and all, we can't do, we can't get, uh, use the grant money unless we have contracts with the owners of the property, so that, that holds it up. The others, if we have a deceased person, we have unknown heirs, that's where we appoint the attorney, and it just slows everything down, but it's still possible to move it.
But it just seems like if you are breaking an ordinance, it's like breaking a law. You know, if someone in your family breaks the law, you don't have to get the approval from all of them to pick that one person up. It's just, if you're breaking the law and you all own it, it just seems like it, it could be a percentage of the heirs to, to go forward with.
And that's the way it works.
And I'm just saying, yeah.
If you're one of the heirs-
You got too much common sense.
-of the property and we're about to take it away, you gotta get notice before we take it away.
There's no time notice, I mean, this can go on for three years. I mean, there's any time period that they have before we, before-
Well, we give them notice when we say, come to the, come to the city council meeting and tell us why we shouldn't tear the building down.
And they don't come.
And, yeah, sometimes they don't come and sometimes they come and they lie to us.
Right.
They promise us, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, look at, look at our grants, okay? The half million dollar one, we thought of the idea, let's not be controversial, volunteer, you know, we'll tear down your stuff for free, okay? It's taken much longer than we thought. Then we came up with ARPA dollars, and we said, it'd work for the state, didn't take this long, let's do it for ourselves. We couldn't, we, we ended up reallocating, if you remember, the council reallocated some of the money 'cause we didn't have enough takers. In other words, round one, we filled it up. Round two, there weren't people anymore coming saying, yes, I wanna tear this down. They couldn't even agree to tear something down for free. And so we didn't, we ended up using the money in other ways because we were running out of time. So it's not easy to convince people to take, you know, some people fight tooth and nail the whole way through while it's falling down around, you know? But the houses are our biggest challenge. I mean, I realize the grass, I think we can, we can get much better at that going through a portal and getting private companies in. The houses are our challenge. You know, the half million dollar grants come in, they say in a couple of weeks. The ARPA ones, I, I know Jeff's working on those, um-
Do you put demos?
What's that?
I think we, uh, I think we have all, all those things down.
Yeah, so those can bid out, and then we get back to our regular demos, which we, you know, we have not-
Um, we're setting up a meeting next week, Matt and Greg Beasley, who's the attorney that has defended some of these things that have turned into damage suits. We're meeting next week to, to work through that process.
Good.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and again, I would just say that I understand we gotta play by the rules that are given to us in Baton Rouge and Washington DC, wherever the rules come from, but I'm just willing to think out the box and on behalf of us and what we can do in-house to do, do a better job, more efficient, and get it off your plate so you don't have to keep revisiting the same subject matter over and over again. It seems as though we can, I think we got enough smart people in here that can get together and figure it out.
I'm in, tell me, tell me what to do.
No, I, I'm available. I don't have all the answers, but I'm ready, I'm, I'm ready to make it happen.
I'm here every day, so.
Yeah, we-
Do you have answers up publicly?
No.
Well, and, and one thing, and this is not gonna be a solution at all, in all cases, and I didn't think it'd be a solution in any case, but, you know, we did have a project on St. Peter Street that Councilman Davis worked with the landowner on.
That was a miracle.
All of us, because, um-
Including him, but, I mean, he came out nice.
Yeah, he had more faith than some of us did.
He did, he did.
But, um, you know, that, that woman put some money in that building. He started doing some stuff.
She really did.
Oh, doing some stuff.
No one's letting it yet, huh?
Come on by.
A different house.
It's amazing, I mean, it's-
That's crazy.
Yes, sir.
I think it's-
And, and dealing with individual landowners, to get improvements on a schedule like that just takes a lot of time.
Mm-hmm, I know how much, uh, you spent time on that.
It took a lot, uh, it, it actually took more money than what she thought, too.
Well, we knew, we knew that. We, we tried to tell her that it was gonna take a lot of money to, to lift that house up.
But she was in there knee-deep, so she had to keep going.
Yeah.
I was around.
Two contractors in the room.
Yeah, we told, we told her, I did an estimate for and said, look, you know, I've been a contractor my whole life, you ain't gonna do it.
No, we had a meeting with her before she started the project, and we said, are you sure you wanna do this, you know?
I told, I told her how much it was gonna cost.
Tell you what, the next door house, need to have something done with it real quick.
Oh, yeah. She made it look worse.
It did, yeah, really.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Laney, you still have access to the map you had up earlier? Okay, what does yellow and red mean?
Those are all the timelines that we were talking about, different years.
Okay.
We not gonna act on them until five years.
So is red five years?
Yellow is five, yellow is five.
Oh, okay.
Yellow's older.
What is that big yellow blob at the top?
I thought it dropped there.
What'd you say it was?
No, he said like, old school.
That's just a track of land, yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a bigger track of land, it's more than one lot.
Oh, it's just land, okay.
Or, one lot?
Oh, that's a big piece.
It is.
Anderson Street. But anyway, the yellow, we can act on, so. And we only wanna act on them as Mayor Pro Tem brought up, after it's five years old, 'cause you got less house.
Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
And Marlo Lewis is not here, so I'll say, the harvest is plentiful, but the labors are few.
That's it, that's what he said every time. You're right, every time. That's funny. Anybody else? Everybody good? Alright, now we moving on to item seven, councilman's remarks. Uh, Councilman Dan Dahl, I'll start on your side. Can't start on Brooke's side every time.
Uh, we, we gotta watch, uh, the children now, school's starting, and, um, and I'm starting to see a lot of, uh, kids. I don't, I don't know if they, it seems like when kids go to school, I see them more outside than when they don't go to school. I don't know what's that about, but we need to just watch, watch, watch the kids around the streets because, um, they are, um, they are all over the place. And, um, and I wanna thank, uh, the mayor for, um, coming up with some solutions as Mr. Como talked about, the cutting of the grass and that. But it's a process that, that, just to let the people know that, I don't think, none of us not doing our job. We're doing our job, we're turning into the, the mayor, the mayor's doing their job. But there's some paperwork, legal stuff, that some people just don't understand, that we have to go through. We don't like it, but a few years ago, we kinda went off the side and did something and we got sued and everything good. So we have to play by the rules. And, and like, me and Ricky was talking today about a neighborhood. I mean, you know, maybe if someone's next to your house, you can go ask them, hey, you can't cut your grass, I'll cut it. I'm not saying that's what it should be, but maybe it has to be that way until we make things happen where we can react faster. 'Cause I have some in my district, like everybody does, and by the time they cut it, by the time they give the ordinance, come back, you broke this, here's the paperwork, ten day, whatever, it's longer again, all over town. I mean, I, I think we all know we have a problem, and I think the mayor knows we have a problem, but the legal part of it is the problem.
Right.
And I, I think we, um, doing what he mentioned, uh, might, might be something we can look into, but I just wanted the public to know that we, we don't, like, we don't care, we do care. And, uh, if I had a lawnmower, I would go cut the grass, I don't have a lawnmower.
I can, I have two, I can-
Oh, that's good, thank you, Mr. Como. Since you don't work, maybe you can do it. But, uh, anyway, just, I just wanna let them know, as, as a process that we go through, it's not that we don't wanna do it.
Funny.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, that was entertaining. Yes, sir.
Alright, um, back to the, uh, back to school. Uh, be mindful of the school zones, uh, and some of the laws that have been passed with the cell phones in the school zones. Uh, penalties are high, uh, and of course, I mean, safety is even higher, so please respect it. Uh, I'm glad to see that we are looking at some of the adjudicated properties as well as the grass cutting, uh, which is very, very necessary 'cause I'm getting a lot of calls myself, uh, that, uh, summer heat and rain has the grasses growing tremendously and is bringing out a lot of, uh, um, testy little critters, you know? So, uh, hopefully we can get, uh, on top of that before, uh, summer's over. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I wanna, first, I wanna thank the city, uh, you know, I buried for the cutting of the grass, 'cause I had a lot of people last month that had, uh, that was called on about their properties and some of them was over thirty days, and they talked to you on a couple of them and they came cutting them. And, uh, it is a lot, because we got a lot of areas where mostly a lot of adjudicated properties where that grass is real high, and it's too hard for them to be able to get everything at one time. So I'm looking forward to us doing something to hire some outside people to be able to do that, 'cause it'll make our job a lot easier, you know? And also wanna mention, we, uh, we have a neighborhood watch meeting on the twenty-first, on a Thursday at the Slaman, and I'm having Corey and, and Panat come out, and also Ms. Carol Whip. They were supposed to come last month, but because of the weather and went on, we canceled the meeting. So it's gonna be back on the twenty-first, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, just, um, quickly on some of the things we talked about tonight, again, exaggerated on the social media posts. Uh, we're all aware of what's going on in town, but I think social media is making us trying to act too quickly and, and above and beyond what we really can do. So, you know, if you're a social media hub, put it out there, let us see it, you know, if you're a social media, put it out there, let us see it, but give us some time and address it, and, and we're gonna do it the right way and get it done, but, uh, some of the things that we see out there are, are being addressed, we just, we have to follow the, the timeline that's appropriate through the city's channels, and, uh, we wanna see them, 'cause we can't see everything, but, uh, you know, give us the benefit of the doubt, we're here to help you, and we're gonna take care of you.
Some on private property.
Exactly.
We, we moved on one that we found on Thursday, it was cleaned up by Monday, that's about as fast as we can go with private issues.
And, and I think that the public needs to be educated on private property rights, because, uh, it's, it's something that we fully don't understand, and, uh, we can't cross that fine line, you really can't.
Thank you.
Good.
I wanna thank the school board and Mr. Jackson for letting us use Anderson Street School for our SOS Summit, call it Youth Summit, Save Our Streets. And I wanna thank all the sponsors, there's a lot of them, so I won't name any of them, but y'all know who y'all are, and thank y'all for sponsoring us with SOS Summit. And we coming again, probably next year again, 'cause we all about our kids, we wanna put them on the right path, so to be productive citizens in our community.
Amen. Amen.
Um, I wanna send my condolences to the Segura family, I'm sure most of you are aware that Ms. Teres Segura passed away recently. Um, she served, uh, two terms in this seat right here, uh, a while back, but she did pass away a couple of weeks ago. So, my condolences to the family.
Thank you. I just have one, I sent out a, a little sketch, okay? The master study's coming, and it won't be long, I was talking to the architect yesterday about it, we'll be scheduling meetings that we'll start looking at projects in each district. The last master study produced a lot of projects, a lot of grants, we'll kinda review, so people see we're not wasting money and time, 'cause they do produce projects. This next one, you'll all have input. Um, another thing that's coming very soon is I'm about to be able to release that we can actually add a few streetlights. So, we're gonna come up with a dot, with a number of streetlights per district, and you'll be able to pick, you know, if it's eight a district, ten a district, I, I'm, I'm figuring out the money right now, but you'll be able to add some streetlights. I figure we would include that with the master study, it's not enough to add them everywhere, it puts you, it's, it's a favor and a blessing and a curse at the same time, because it's got a number. So, you can only add, you know, let's say if it's ten, but I'm working through the money that we have left and to allow that to happen. I sent out something early, because people always say they want government to ask before we do things, well, when you ask, you get some nasty grams, okay? But I would rather ask, okay? So, we took Weeks, Julia, French, and Iberia, those four streets, only between Maine and St. Peter, and said, what if we made those one-way, and you did like New Orleans, and you went around the block? You'd pick up forty-two or forty-three parking spaces. So, there's little buildings, yes, people would have to go around a block, but there are quite a few buildings that aren't being developed, that don't have parking, so it was a way to say, okay, 'cause it's not all about fairs and festivals, it's about every day, but there are times, on the weekends, we have some new restaurants, we got a couple of more coming, we, we, I Pals busy, there are times that their parking is not great downtown. You can get there, but people will walk further from Lowe's or Walmart than they're willing to walk in a downtown. They just go around the block, I didn't see a parking space, they go somewhere else. But at Lowe's or Walmart, we'll walk across, you know, three football fields, that's just how human nature is. So, we did a little study, sent it to only those people that were impacted, 'cause I always hear, well, well, why don't you talk to the people that invest? So, just the property owners on those four blocks, we sent them a little drawing and said, what do you think? Okay, well, I'm getting it back. They don't think, okay, they don't want it. So, I tried, but I'm gonna include that in the master study, 'cause it's a great example that we tried to think of something out of the box, 'cause out of the box is good, and then we presented it to those that had the most skin in the game, and they're telling me they don't want it. Okay, so you're gonna see sometimes in this next master study, as we come across proj, don't be scared to think of something that you always wanted to try. We're not doing it, we're not implementing it, but if you don't think out of the box, and you don't give your citizens a chance to have some input before you do something, then why are we sitting up here? So, that's one that's gonna go down as a, as a sinking ship, okay? But I bring it up, because when we start doing these master study things, don't hold back, if you have an idea for, you know, we had some resistance in a neighborhood park, we went and talked to the community, I think they're good now, I think it's gonna be okay, but you had a few people that said, I don't want it. You know, we've had some other little projects that went down, and, you know, so what I'm trying to do is more community outreach before we do something. But this was one that, you know, I, I got, I asked for an answer, I'm getting it, okay, well, we won't be doing that. But I think it's fun to celebrate that, at least we're asking, and at least we're saying, hey, as government, we wanna know what you want. Um, just like the dialogue we had tonight, we didn't all agree, but everybody talked about it, everybody got out where they needed to get, and, you know, at the end, we all came together to say, okay, but if, and that's not picking on you, if that's what we get, and we wanna see it in writing, that, that's the way we, we work. That's, that's true government at work. Nobody gets all jacked, nobody gets bent out of shape, we're all friends, we all live in the same community, and you come back together and say, okay, well, that's the decision, let's make it the best we can. So, I'm very proud of that, I'm proud of every one of y'all, and, and I'm telling you, I say that all the time, I'm blessed to have every one of you up here. And that's it, I'm done, I need a motion to adjourn, we done.
Move.
Great, thank you.